This is the Addison Central School District Board Meeting of June 19th, 2017. Just to give everybody a sense of how things will unfold, we're going to do some introductions. We're going to approve our minutes and then we're going to move into the public comment time as the opportunity for the, those of you who are here to speak for the board on whatever issue. I assume those who are speaking are probably here about the sixth grade issue to go ahead and, you know, give us your comments. It's not meant to be a Q and A or debate. We're really here to listen to what you have to say. I ask everybody to keep it within the three to four minute range if possible. And then we're going to hear a report from the superintendent based on his work. And then the board will have its deliberation on this matter as well. We'll do it in a very orderly manner going around the table in order of board members. So anyway, that's the way we're going to do it. But we'll begin straight away with introductions of board members and staff who are here. Come on in.
Mary Gill, Middlebury.
Victoria Diddy.
Chris Eaton.
Jason Duquette-Hoffman.
Peter Burrows, superintendent.
I'm Peter Conlin.
Suzanne Buck.
Jenny Seater.
Nick Korsen.
Perry Hanson.
Josh Quinn, business manager.
Thanks, everyone. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 5th, 2017?
Zoot.
Thank you. Second.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary. Any changes, additions that people would like to make? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the June 5 minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody wishing to abstain? None of the above? Thanks very much. Your turn. Would anybody, does anybody here to speak before the board? If not, we'll keep things relatively brief. This is the, this is the only opportunity, once the board begins its deliberations, it will be just among board members. All right. Well, thank you very much. Then we turn the floor over to the superintendent.
Peter.
Oh, I'm very sorry. Could you just tell us your name and what town you're from?
Sure. My name is Julie Berry. I'm from Waybridge. I just wanted to comment more briefly. I've read through the superintendent's report. I've been involved on and off learning about this whole process as it's gone along. One of the things that concerned me as we were going into this was the starting point for this. And the starting point, from my perspective anyway, was the question, what's the best place for a sixth grade? And from my perspective, again, that seemed like a very strange starting point, a narrow starting point for looking at grade configuration in general, but also for looking at what we want to be doing as a district. And it seemed to me that that really defrothed other questions that I think were embedded within that part of it and that were as important, rather important, to look at questions like facilities and like, questions like equity. And it seemed to sort of skip past all those questions and go straight to the sixth grade question. And I appreciated that in reading Peter's report that, my understanding of that recommendation anyway, is that pulls it back to a question that I think is what we really need to be thinking about and talking about, and that is, what's the most important thing for us to be doing right now? Instead of the narrow question of, of what's on the sixth grade. So I would want to urge the board to both know on moving sixth grade administration and have these bigger issues that Peter outlined in his report, issues of equity and facilities and, so, that are integral to that one question.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, I just want to clarify one thing. The vote will be on, well, depending on how the motion is made, whether we accept the recommendation of the superintendent. In back.
Hi, my name is Pauline Underwood. I'm from Middlebury. And I wanted to talk, I agree with the person we're talking for about the sixth grade moving or not might be a very broad question, but I do think it really addresses the question of inequity by addressing it, by bringing students from the different schools already in sixth grade and to moms where we know that the question of inequity is being addressed wonderfully. Moms have done very well, so I mean, I was different, going to different schools together, and I would love for the sixth grade to have the same thing growing up than they have right now. Because it does feel right now that even though elementary school has pushed it home, there are true inequities, particularly with different schools, funding and student generation and, and I feel that we have heard a lot of comments that in fact, well, they have very positive experiences, but the other schools have not been as loud. And so it almost seems like they're not being heard. They had two teacher groups evaluate the process and they all, both came out in the end supporting me. And so, as much as I respect the superintendent's recommendation not to go forward at this time because it's been rather short notice and the transition would be harder, but there's still a year to actually work on the transition. And I'm very sure the team can work very well on that transition and make it happen in a way that has worked very well. So I'm hoping that the board will think about the issue as it has been discussed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Sears, and I am Pauline Underwood. I'm also a teacher here, as people will know that, but that's not the, here at High School. But that's not the role I'm speaking. It's more of an observation. I'll be honest, I am, I see positives in both. So I, what I'm about to say here is not actually rooted deeply in, kind of a deep, I could see positives of both, and I think that's, that's one reason why you have interesting arguments on this side of the issue, right? Is that there's going to be things to go both sides. I think the thing that concerns me though, to be honest, is there does seem to be this tendency to not entirely deal with one of the essential pieces that we know is there, but I feel like we're not talking about out in the open as much as we should. And that is really the question of what happens to small schools in the district. I think from the beginning of the Act 46 process, there's been a real concern on the part of people from smaller, smaller schools, and I don't think it's just been with Middlebury or Littlebury, I think it's been any number of places, where people realize that a small school is the heart of their community very often. I'm from a very small town in northeast Cape Nook, a K through 12 school, and I know the role that a school plays in, in small towns. And I feel like, you know, when you read reports along the way, one of the bullets is, oh, and people are worried about the impact on schools and these other things. I feel like it gets thrown in there with a lot of other bullets because I feel like it is one of the more difficult questions that we have to face and that you frankly have to face. And I think having a broad, a conversation about something that could have such an impact without having it really be out there, when I'll say to you, I think we all know that that's a big reason why people in the small towns are concerned about it. They're worried about the fact that you take one-seventh of the school away in its structure. That does pose more of a threat to the survival of schools. It's just something we need more out in the open than we have. I feel like there's too much dissimulation, there's too much illusion of other things, there's too many questions. Like, let's put it out there. People feel like the small schools are a risk. People who live in small communities really, really, many of them, some might, but some really don't want to lose that and they're afraid that some of these steps will cost that. We need to put that out in the open. You guys need to, I think, really have, and I'm sure you have been, but continue to have a, a public engagement with that thing too, that question too, because that's what your constituents, one of the things they're really, really worried about. I understand the idea of sixth grade equity, but to say, well, let's fix that in sixth grade, well, doesn't that, what about K through five? Like, what does it look like to maybe address that within the small schools themselves instead of just saying, well, put them in the middle school and that'll fix that? Maybe there's a way to do it by having people in those small schools, but, I mean, IB is supposed to be a way to do this, and I believe it can be. I'm an IB fan and a practitioner. So, let's put that out. Let's, let's be honest about the elephants in the room.
Thanks. Further comment? Well, thank you all very much for attending and for your thoughtful comments.
Peter, just one, we got two letters today that the authors asked that they be read. I don't know what your opinion of that was or who should read them, but I just wanted to mention.
Were they asked to be read?
They were by the authors.
Okay. Sorry, I missed that part of it. If anybody has them available to read.
I only got one of them. There's both.
Were they both in the ACSU web?
There's both, Peter.
They were sent to the board in our email.
I'll, I'll read these. This, the first one is from Amy Graham of Middlebury, a parent and former ID4 board member. I'm hoping to be able to attend the ACSD board meeting tonight, but since I may not be able to, I'm writing to now lend my voice in support of moving sixth grade to moms. I recognize that this is a complicated decision with many factors to consider. However, as a parent of a current sixth grader, I feel it is important to express my opinion that moving sixth grade to moms is the right thing to do for our students. Over the past year, it has become increasingly clear to me that my daughter and her friends are more than ready for the academic and social challenges of middle school. In fact, my daughter has sought out as many challenges as possible at Mary Hogan, but still finds she needs more than the elementary school curriculum can provide her. I have heard the same sentiment expressed by other parents of current and former sixth graders. While I love Mary Hogan, I don't think that sixth graders are being well-served developmentally and academically in an elementary school setting. I'm excited about the district's move to an IB curriculum, and I think that this is the perfect opportunity to bring the sixth graders into the middle years program, which is specifically designed to start in sixth grade. I believe that we would be doing a huge disservice to our students to leave the sixth graders behind in the PYP program when the vast majority of them are ready for more challenges, both academically and socially. Given that we have had such a strong middle school that supports our students in their transition, transition to middle school so well, and that the middle school would become the sixth graders, would welcome the sixth graders, I believe that we should move ahead with this quickly. I understand the argument that there is already a lot of change happening in our school system, but I don't believe that delaying the transition would benefit anyone. To me, it seems better to rip the Band-Aid off quickly and adjust to IB with sixth grade in the right place as part of the middle years program, rather than have the community endure two separate transition and adjustments, first to IB, then to having the sixth grade at moms at some point in the future. This is from Rebecca Irwin of Middlebury and Blake Harrison. My husband and I may not be able to attend the meeting tonight, so I'm writing to now share our wholehearted support for moving sixth grade to moms. We are parents of a sixth grader and a fourth grader at Mary Hogan, and we are certain that the grade reconfiguration offers considerable academic, social, and extracurricular opportunities. That, that moms prin, that moms principal Kristin Holzman-Frankor welcomes and supports the move, as well as the primary years and middle years IB design teams, confirms for us that this is truly in the best interest of students across ACSD. Like many supporters of this move, I attended community forums and completed both online surveys. We, along with the majority of survey respondents who support the sixth grade move, did not leave additional comments. Our restraint shouldn't be mistaken for a lack of support. We were swayed not only by the recommendations of the IB design teams, ACSD administrators, and the structural design of the IB curriculum itself, but also the experience of our sixth grader, who by the end of her time at Mary Hogan had exhausted the opportunities afforded to her by an elementary school setting. We are also committed supporters of the IB curriculum. After a year and a half of study and unanimous school board decision, it would be a shame to delay the sixth grade move rather than embark on IB with a committed, well-positioned start. Moms is ready now. The research and data has been collected, and parents, administrators, and teachers support the move. We may not know how opinions will change in a few years, but we do know that Vermont's demographics are unlikely to reverse labor costs for ACSD staff to replicate. Research and surveys will be higher, and the world will become increasingly more complicated. IB can support our students as they navigate this complex world, but only if we are unshrinking enough to take the needed steps. Best of luck on this complicated decision, and thank you for all your contributions to the community. Anything further? Yes?
Could you just sign Maria and Amy Graham at the bottom of Blake and Rebecca's? I'm Maria Graham from Middlebury, and she says it much more beautifully than I put. But I think the other elephant in the room is the inequity and class size. And you can tell from the Mary Hogan parents who are in support of this and having just a daughter who's just finishing the middle school. If that principal and that faculty say they can do it, and they can do it as well as they're doing seventh and eighth grade now, then I am all for it.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Peter's going to give us basically a brief synopsis, not a slide-by-slide rendition of the, of the configuration report.
I was actually going to talk about, more about my recommendation.
Yes.
Right. So, as all of you know, the recommendation was housed within the report that went out last week, and I would assume that many of you have read that. I do have a few copies here. If anyone wanted a copy to take a look at, is anyone interested in a paper copy? Pass that around, if just someone might want to take a look at it. So, this process, as I outlined, which began a few years ago internally and then became a community conversation in March and April of, of this year, I think has been one that ACSD has been looking at for quite some time. I know in, in coming here, this is the end of my fourth year, in my first year here, I had a lot of questions about this. So I think it's something that has been, maybe not officially talked about, but unofficially, educators and community members have been talking about this. And I think one of the reasons that it has been a topic of, of not just conversation, but a real kind of educational change is that moms does a really great job. And I, I think that, that two-year experience that kids have at moms is really powerful. And I think that's part of where some of this, where this, this conversation about moving sixth grade to moms really began, is the, the power and strength of moms. And I think what I hear from parents about the moms experiences is very powerful. In my own experience, my son is moving into eighth grade. It's been a wonderful year, and I've seen him grow and change in ways that I, I didn't think he would. So, I, I just want to kind of let, let that out before I start talking about my recommendation. Going into this, there were a lot of conversations about this process, about how we were going to get to a decision, about would this be an open process? What would the, the key pieces of the decision be grounded in? And it, it was, I think, for, for me, in terms of my role in the overall process, and I'm kind of the, taking all of the information from our design teams, from our listening tours, from the surveys, from our community forums, and from elsewhere, to try to make sense of what makes sense for us, for ACSD and ACSD students right now. I, I toiled with this recommendation because I think, as the report bears out, there are a lot of positives when you look at sixth graders at moms. And I think our two IB design teams resoundingly supporting that is something that we need to be thinking about and, and moving into the long-range master plan that I believe is really critical to carry this work forward. The, these kinds of processes are, are really challenging, especially when there are competing visions about what's right for kids. And I don't think it's going to be easier in a few years to bring this question back up. But I do think as a new district with a new board that's stepping forward on July 1, as a single community for the first time, that making this move right now has the potential of, of creating a, a pretty significant rift in our new district that would make it very challenging for us to continue to do the other challenging work we have ahead. We've been talking fiscally about some of the challenges that we're going to be facing. We currently have 1,748 students. We are looking to lose roughly 140 students or so over the next five years. This is a kind of a projection based on an average class size of around 120 coming in and losing a number of, of students from the high school. So we're going to have to be contending with some, some really challenging questions which, which bring up a lot of the, the issues I think that were raised in the audience today. Biarke was talking about the fragility of small schools. And, and the challenge is that, that came out in every listening tour I went to in a small school, that, that sense of ownership of the school and what's going to happen to our school is not going to go away. And, and, you know, I think as Biarke was saying, we need to, we need to figure out ways to talk about that. A long-range master plan, I think, is more prudent than moving forward with this initial step, because I think there's other work that we need to do to look at all aspects of this, not just the educational opportunities. We need to also be thinking about our long-range plan, about where we're headed, about what we can sustain. We may be really, really challenged fiscally, and we may have to look at the kinds of programming that we want in schools, and we may have to make decisions that are going to be really challenging. And we have to be guided by more than, I'm coming from this place and someone else is coming from that place. We have to be guided by, I think, work together to build that plan, led by the board and, and by me and the administration and the community, to, to, to create a plan, to map out and look at all of that. Vermont is, is known for the study committee phenomenon, where you look at something, there is debate, there is sometimes upset, and then it gets sequestered to a study committee, which then it kind of slowly pitter-patter in a way, and, and you don't hear about it again. And I, I think that would be a huge loss if we took all of the work that we've done over the past four months and the previous two years, when, when moms began to look at this, to just stop this process now and see what happens. I think it's critical that we see this not as an end. This process is not an end. Tonight is not an end of this, of this question at all, but it's a step in a process. And I think if it's a step in a process and the work of the IB design teams moves forward in a long-range master plan, that is going to, I think, ultimately both benefit students and it's going to allow us to do the work that we need to do right now, which, when I look at our capacity and I look at the capacity of our staff and I look at the pretty significant change we're going through, we're going to need to be really intentional. And I think we're going to be able to be more intentional and do that work together if we wait on this and, and move it into a, a longer-range master plan to make the right decision for the long term.
Thank you. All right. Well, we will do this in a nice formal way as we did with the vote on our international backglow curriculum. I'd like to entertain a motion to, a motion.
I move that the ACSD board accepts the June 12th, 2017 recommendation of Superintendent Burrows to not move forward with moving sixth grade to moms at this time.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a second. So we'll move into the formal discussion phase of this, and if you'd all, if we could just recess for two minutes, I just want to get another board member on the phone who wanted to be part of this.
It might be the buck spray I made today.
Hi, Lorraine Speder. I'm going to, I'm going to put you on speaker in case you want to chime in. But when the vote comes around, you can text your vote. Peter Burrows will record it. When the time comes, text your vote and Peter Burrows will record it. Yes, to this number. Yeah. All right. All right. So we have moved and seconded. The mover gets first shot of the apple, and then we'll go around in a circle.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I believe the superintendent's grade configuration report spells out a clear and cogent review and argument for not moving the sixth grade to moms at this time. As the board works with the superintendent to update its strategic planning in the next year or two or three, whatever it takes, an appropriate timeframe for and discussion about grade configuration can be carried out in a comprehensive and unrushed way. I'd also like to say that in addition to the superintendent's report, I am grateful for the several letters from concerned parents and others in the community, for their comments made at the listening sessions, at the schools across our district, and the three regional forums. I think I made it to about seven of them, and it was very good. I sincerely hope also that teachers and administrators involved in the IB design teams will understand if we do not move forward at this time. I am convinced that the team members learned a lot and will be able to put these new insights to use in moving forward with IB, even without a change in the grade configuration in the immediate future. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick, why don't you carry it along?
Oh, okay. As background, I have two grandkids in the ele, in an elementary school and one in the middle school. I've been very concerned about the grade six configuration, and like Perry, attended four school visits and all three community forums. I've been very convinced that, I have not been convinced, that moms could do a better job with grade sixes than the existing elementary schools, and geographic centralization will lead to additional challenges. However, it does appear that not all grade six programs in our elementary schools are equal, and I was disappointed that the PYP, MYP design teams did not address existing issues, but chose only to look at the possible mom solution. We need to optimize equity across all elementary schools, and IB should help bring the solution. I see this strengthening of all existing grade six classes as a major objective of the next two years, and I don't see this as long-term. List from a successful IB, let's, let's focus on a successful IB implementation across all grades and schools. Once we've done this, we can look at possible reconfigurations, restructurings that may be needed based on enrollments, educational opportunities, financial costs, and all the other inputs that we cannot measure today. So I fully endorse the superintendent's brave recommendation not to move forward with grade six to moms.
Ken.
I will not, I do not have as formal and probably as well-thought-out recommendations as, as the two of you did. I appreciate what both of you said, and I would echo a lot of it. I also was able to attend many of the community forums and found them really helpful in understanding the different perspectives, and there are a lot of different perspectives. I know this decision means a lot to a lot of us. I also have two children in the school system. One of them is in fourth grade and would have been in the class. That would be immediately impacted. So it definitely is a decision that I was paying close attention to and making sure that I was as educated as I could. I had some concerns, mostly at one of the later meetings, about the readiness of moms, actually, and if the facility was large enough to, to take as many sixth graders as would be coming right now, and what the class size would be for those sixth graders. I'm not sure that we have hard numbers for that. Some numbers were, were provided at our meeting, and, and those numbers were concerning to me. And so when I read Dr. Burrows' recommendation, I was happy to see that we, we will be able to spend some time forecasting enrollments and the facilities to make sure that we will be providing the, the most optimal opportunity for the students. And I was prepared to support whatever decision you recommended, frankly, because Dr. Burrows at all of these forums and community gatherings, I felt was really hearing all of and community gatherings, I felt was really hearing all of the concerns as well and, and responding very well to all of the comments and concerns. And I feel like he has the best grasp of this and, and is recommending what he feels will be the best for our district.
Thank you. Suzanne?
I have to admit, when we first brought the issue back, I was definitely on the boat of, yes, definitely, sixth grade, out to Mums makes perfect sense, more opportunities, more equity for them. But then, as I started listening to, not only to the people in the community, but to the staff and to the Mums staff, and then to the IB, I started having more and more questions. We weren't, we're unsure, and I don't know if by now Dr. Burrows has figured out the numbers of staff that would have to receive further training to pick up the middle school endorsement for the sixth grade to move to Mums. That was a piece. Another piece was, and maybe it wasn't meant to be said this way, but it seemed that the Mums staff, because of their configuration, which has been so, so successful. I've had two kids go through the middle school, so I know the program pretty well. But just saying that they wanted to keep that instead of saying, well, here's a perfect opportunity to look at how we're doing things and maybe change it. How could we make a better middle school? We have a great middle school, but how could we make even better when we add the sixth grade? So having that flexibility in the way that they're educating our students was a piece that I didn't hear. So maybe, maybe it was there, but I just didn't hear it at the places that I went. And I've had a lot of letters, and I've read them, I've had phone calls. Some people are for it, some people are against it. But the biggest issues that have come up for me are equity across all grade levels and making sure that we do it right. I mean, we've got so much change going on right now that, being an educator myself, I understand that when you have too much change going on in, in someone's plate, things don't always get done the way we want them to be done. And I want this to be done the best we can possibly do it for our students. And if that means that we take another year and fully prepare for it, then I'm all for it. But I don't want our students to be caught in the mix or in the crosshairs of making so many changes.
Thanks. Jason?
When the Board received Peter's recommendation in, I think it was March, that we move ahead with looking at this for a, a June decision date, I was surprised at that timeline for a process like this. Others on the Board voiced some concern about that timeline as well, particularly Ruth, which I thought was an important concern. And I think that what has come out of that process reflects, to some degree, why that concern was important to be raised at that time. And that is that, yes, this question has been bouncing around in a less formal way for some time. I think to really put together all of the, all of the pieces of a plan, to consider all of the angles and to see how it best fits, that's a, that's a big lift in a matter of a few months. You know, I think that despite that short timeline, I think that the teams did a really admirable job of looking very thoroughly at this question. I feel good about the direction that, that inquiry process is going. But I think this raises a lot of questions that we need to answer in addition to where, where should sixth graders go to school. You know, some of the concerns that are raised have to do with the sixth grade experience, which is not the same among all of the elementary schools. You know, some communities are saying, we really find our sixth grade experience to be excellent. We don't want to lose that. Some are saying, our sixth grade experience is, is not good. It's not what we want, and we're looking to the middle school to solve that problem. I don't see that as a locational question. I see that as an educational question. So why are we trying to solve educational questions with a locational answer, you know, without knowing more about what those issues are? This has been a concern of mine for, through this process, and I think it's borne out in this report. But maybe that's the way I'm reading it. We seem to be reading different things into this, into the report. But, and maybe that means it's really comprehensive and it's capture of the varied perspectives that are out there, and that's, that's fine. You know, I, I absolutely agree with Peter that if we bracket this conversation and set it aside from this point on, we are making a terrible error as an educational community, as a district community. I think we need to look really carefully at all the questions that this raises. We need to do some really hard-looking. Where, where we're finding our sixth graders are not having the experience we want, we need to look really hard at that. Period. Where we find our sixth graders are having a great experience, we need to learn from that. Period. And when we look at that and we decide, how do we best make sure that all of our kids have that great experience? Maybe the answer is going to be, we need them all in the same place. At which point, I hope all of the folks who say, we really love our sixth grade experience, are going to step up and say, yes, every kid deserves to have that sixth grade experience. Let's make it happen for them in that place. And here's how we're going to do it. But we need to have a plan for that. So I'm, I think I share the perspective of the superintendent in that we're not ready to make this move, I don't think, as a district yet. I think we have a lot of more communication to do. I think we have to build a sense of, of ourselves as a district first. And that may not be the answer that we want, but I think it's the answer that we have, from what I can see.
Thanks, Jason. Chip?
This is a, I, I thought a very challenging issue when it first came up, trying to think about it. I support a superintendent's recommendation, but I do it with some perspective also. Back in the mid 1990s, when we built, when we did the bond for the middle school, the whole issue of sixth grade configuration in that school was a very hot issue. And it, I don't think it was as in-depth as we were looking at it from many different factors here. Some of it were just related to how do we plan ahead, well, if we're going to build a new building with enrollments as they were in the elementary schools at that time. However, it's been around for a long time. So it's not like it's been something that's sort of come up right away. I, I think, trying to, and I think we all have touched on this, in trying to think about this issue, I, I thought it was an amazingly respectful process, Board, superintendent, faculty, and certainly the public. Because I got terrific letters, I got very good phone calls, unbelievably civil and thought out, not emotional, not always based on my kid is this kid who's going to be affected by it, which is important, but yet that isn't the only perspective. But across the Board, the issue, I thought, was really deliberated. And, and so I felt comfortable with that. I wasn't quite sure what Mr. Dr. Burrows was going to do. And when he recommended, he recommend, not to do it, he recommended really for the reasons that I was falling toward, even though I totally support and will support in the future, at least this kind of action as we change our district, because in 10 years, this is going to be very different than it is now. And whether it's an elephant in the room, or whether it's an absolute issue, issue and many issues that we as a Board and community have to discuss, it's going to happen and be different. However, I just couldn't get my head around doing it all now. And I just felt that it was much part, it was, it was part of a much bigger issue, grade configuration along with how we're going to deal with this new community and district. And so I was, I was comforted. I really talked to Board members, I talked to community members and had many opinions, but I didn't really know where we were all coming from. But I also felt that this was the right way to go. Being a somewhat cautious person, I felt that this was probably the best move, but not to put it under the rug and forget it, because this is all part of this big picture, so.
Chris?
So I've, I would agree with a lot of things that have been said already. I think there's a lot of thoughtful things that have been brought up. And I think, for me, what's important about this is, and this is going to borrow a little bit of what's been said, but I think that our job as a Board is going to be focused around the discussion that this has brought up and the larger questions that, that have been brought up by everybody, and that we, we as a Board, who are still coming together, need to take real action to begin to discuss a lot of the difficult questions that, that this sort of stirs up in all of our communities. So I support the superintendent's recommendation. I think it was a, a difficult thing to, to do at this time, but I think it's the right thing to do. But I think that it leads us to where we need to work and come together as a Board to discuss, to look at that 10-year plan, that 15-year plan for the future of the schools.
Thanks. Victoria?
A lot of what Jason spoke about resonated with me, so I won't, like, repeating it. But I also wanted to say that I was glad to hear Dr. Burrows elaborate a little bit on why he made the recommendation not to move the sixth grade, because I felt like, and again, in a different reading, that was sort of like reading a novel with a surprise ending. I got to page 13, and I was sure that he was going to recommend moving it.
Can you speak up, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I was just saying that I had a different reading of the report, and that I was glad to hear Dr. Burrows speak earlier a little bit more towards why he is recommending not to move the sixth grade, because when I read the report, it felt like a novel with a surprise ending, that I got to page 13 and was sure I would turn the page and he would recommend that the sixth grade was being moved, or for the sixth grade to be moved. So it sort of leaves me in a place where I wonder, are we right where we were trying to avoid being, which is moving forward with IB and then having to discuss, what are we doing with sixth grade? Maybe that's where we are, and that's, and everybody's okay with that. But it feels like the process led us to right where we didn't want to be. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about the master plan and the, the timeline around that, because I do feel like a lot of the evidence, the surveys, the design teams pointed towards moving sixth grade, and it, and people seem to think that that's a, that is, that's a good idea. So do we have a, a timeframe around the master plan and, and I feel like I have more, more questions than answers, which...
I don't, I don't know if you were asking that rhetorically or not.
Yeah.
But I mean, that's going to be largely Board-driven.
Yep.
Hi. I, I'm new on the Board, just since April, the end of April. And when I heard that this was on the docket, having had a lot of experience working at Mary Hogan, where it's a very large school, and recognizing, yes, many of the sixth graders by the middle of their sixth grade year really look like they're ready to go on, I thought, oh, this is, this is a no-brainer. This is going to be easy. But after attending a number of the meetings and looking through the report, again, I would, like Victoria, I read it and I thought, this is all leading towards a positive. Yes, the, the sixth graders should move over. But by attending several of the meetings and, and beginning to listen to all the constituents about the concerns that were not being addressed, one of which is the elephant in the room, that Biarke talked about, it gave me the insight that we really need to start looking at education across the lifespan and not just K through 12. We have preschoolers that need better opportunities. We have adults who need better opportunities. We have seniors who have, who want other opportunities. So knowing that we have many educational facilities within our district, I think by having an opportunity to look at a more long-range plan at education across all age spans, that it'll give us more time to think about those things. And then give us more time, or give the community, I think Peter's take on building trust within our community as a district is really important, because if a decision is made and not, you know, there isn't a really good consensus by the, most of the people, it's going to be a battle further on down the road about different things that come up. So I, I, I wrote Peter, I said, I congratulate you on what he decided, because I, I was kind of conflicted after all the meetings, and I felt that he made a, a good decision, too, to just, let's, let's look at a, a long-range plan, let's look more broadly. And so I'm, I'm in agreement. Okay.
So as a school Board member, I always try to look at everything from what's best for our community and, most importantly, what's best for our students. And when we talk about students, I try to think about what, how do we measure equity, opportunity, and excellence for our students? So I really tried to look at this issue from that perspective. And I, too, read the report and thought it had a surprise ending. I felt this, that the, that the report really led to arguing that equity, opportunity, and excellence for our students across our district would be better served by moving sixth grade to the middle school. So I was surprised and remain surprised even upon hearing more from the superintendent and more from my colleagues on the Board. I think as adults, we tend to resist change. And as children, children often tend to welcome change. They welcome new opportunities as they develop, as they mature, as they learn new things. And 11 and 13, 11 through 13-year-olds, which is the age group that we're talking about, especially love change. They're growing, they're changing, they're entering puberty, their life and their world is expanding, and it's the perfect time for them to move to a larger school with a more diverse student body and greater opportunities. And I fear that adult fears of change are hindering our children's abilities to embrace change and expand their opportunities. I think as school Board members, we have to make a lot of decisions that are systems decisions and a lot of decisions that are educational decisions. We've spent the last couple of years talking about systems. And systems decisions are often decisions that are focused on adult needs and adult, adult biases, adult opinions. How we organize our school district, how we are configured as a Board, how we organize ourselves democratically, how we vote, and how we spend our money, those are adult decisions. And those need to be based on what we as adults are comfort, comfortable with. And that's why we took a lot of time to decide how to configure our school district. And we did so in a way that we could maximize agreement on that decision. And I'm proud of our efforts for doing that, and it was an honor to be part of that. But this decision is an educational decision, and it's based on what is best for our students. And those decisions need to, adults need to step away from what makes them uncomfortable and really think about what our kids need and what is best for our kids, and try to separate adult fears of our kids growing up from those decisions. Needs to be a student-focused decision. Moving sixth grade also opens up opportunities for other students. At our last meeting, we had a brief conversation about pre-K, and Jason raised the question, are there opportunities to increase our pre-K spots at our school, in our school districts? And the Shoreham principal, I'm not sure if he's here tonight, but he mentioned that Shoreham would love to have a pre-K program, but they simply do not have the room. And Shoreham is a community that could really benefit from having And Shoreham is a community that could really benefit from having more pre-K slots in its school. He said the sixth grade decision is going to determine whether or not we can actually have a pre-K program in Shoreham. And I know the same is true at Mary Hogan. We are crunched for space because our numbers, our enrollment is increasing dramatically at Mary Hogan, unlike the rest of the district, and we need space. We've had to actually move the Head Start program out of our building, move a pre-K program out of our building because we don't have space. And I know that the leaders at Mary Hogan would like to be able to serve pre-K program students, but they can't because we don't have space. But if we moved the 66 graders away to Mums, a place that would better serve them developmentally, academically, and socially, then we could serve pre-K students more at Mary Hogan. So, I think that there are repercussions in our district beyond sixth grade. I think the report touched on that. I wish I had touched on it a little bit more. And I think that also moving sixth graders to Mums, it opens up opportunities for lab science, for more than one language opportunity, for better, broader music. They have a full choral program, a full band program, and a full jazz band program. And they have multiple math options at Mums. None of our elementary schools, even the ones that claim to have the best and broadest opportunities, none have all of those opportunities. So, this would provide greater opportunities for our sixth graders across our district. I try really hard as a school board member not to have my decisions influenced overly by my, my role as a parent. But I have three children who are in this school district. One's at the high school, one's at the middle school, and one's at Mary Hogan. This is a conversation, as Chip rightly says, that has been going on for decades in our district. And when I first moved here 15 years ago, this was a conversation that people were having. Parents were having it then. When my daughter entered kindergarten, I already knew that this was an issue. And we were prevented from really doing much about it because we were multiple school districts and it took a complicated vote. But we solved that problem. We solved the democratic problem of what to do about sixth grade. And now, we have to solve the educational problem. I know that my own three children would, would have benefited greatly from being able to move to sixth grade at Mums. I wish that this had, this decision could have been made 15 years ago, could have been made 25 years ago, so that, that all of our students could have benefited. And in talking to most, but not all, of the parents at Mary Hogan, I believe that there's fairly strong support among parents for the same reasons that I've, I've mentioned, a support that I have as a parent. I'm concerned that going with the superintendent's recommendation would not support all of the work that our teachers and our administrators across the school have done for this report. I was incredibly impressed that the PYP and the MYP, NYPD teams were nearly unanimous in this decision and the thought and the broad work that they put into ensuring that their recommendation was what was best for students. I don't think it was a selfish decision. I think it was a professional decision. And I think it frankly makes it look like they're not trusted if we don't go with their, with their recommendation to move our sixth grade to the middle school. The timeline that we used, yes, I had, I had reservations about this timeline. For those of you who pay attention, I also had reservations about moving to IB so quickly. I was the sole board member who had very big concerns about the finances, the professional development, the recruitment, and the timeline of moving to IB so quickly. And when the superintendent asked that we, that we talk about the sixth grade question in March, I did bring up concerns. However, the timeline was set by the superintendent and he got an answer. And in my reading of that report, the answer is to move sixth grade. That is what is best for our students. That is what is best for our school district. And I'm sorry that he didn't have the courage to make that decision. I think we need to be student-focused on equity and opportunity for all of our students. And I will not be supporting the superintendent's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. One of the sort of benefits of going last, so I get to cherry pick what other people have said. I really just want to begin with stealing a little bit from Chip, talking about the process that went...
Sorry to interrupt you. I just didn't know if Lorraine was going to comment or not.
She's, she can't talk. She's just texting.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Apologies.
I'm sorry, a little bit about the process. This was a very thoughtful, engaging process. We had people weighing in from all areas. And I think that you've all heard tonight that these board members all spent a lot of time thinking about it, considering it before making up their own minds. I come down in support of, of the recommendation. But I will say, I think that the, I think that the proposal to move sixth grade to Mums as part of the NYPD is a sound, is a sound proposal, educationally sound. And I, and I would agree with Ruth that this is a little bit, not so much a kid issue as it is an adult issue. But the perspectives that I heard and that I also attended a half a dozen of these forums is that that's a very important issue and the impact on the schools of removing one grade, and especially at a time, and I'm going to steal this from Peter, when we are going to be losing 140 students anyway over a period of five years. The impact on our schools is something that we do need to look at. So, my, my endorsement of the superintendent's recommendation concerning sixth grade is lukewarm. My, I feel much stronger in his recommendation that we need to be studying this issue much more closely and build a much, a much more robust plan that not only takes into account moving sixth grade to Mums, but the impact of that on, on, on our schools, given the fact that, that in five years, we will lose the equivalent of two elementary school population. And I guess that's my way of saying that this was a hard decision, but I don't think it's going to compare with the decisions that we're going to be facing in dealing with this in the, in the decisions we're going to have to make in the future. The loss of 140, it could be more, students in five years is going to tax not only the finances, the staffing at all of our schools, but it's going to tax our ability to provide a quality education. And if you look at some of the, of the, you know, population projections for our smaller elementary schools, where some grades are going to have two, four, six kids in them, and thinking about whether that's the most educationally sound way of educating our students, whether that provides the equity that we need, I think is a difficult, it's going to provide some difficult decision-making on the board's part. And, you know, we've got our work cut out for us. It's going to require a lot of information. And, you know, I respect the, what the superintendent said in his comments tonight that we have put a lot out there. We have put out there unification in and of itself. We have put out there international baccalaureate. And these are things that we need to have solidly underneath us. And I think that that would, that the, this coming time will help do that. And I think that the decision-making by this board tonight is a, is a fine example of that. And anyway, I look forward to our continued discussions on this. And that's where I stand. Further discussion? Would anybody else like an opportunity to speak on this, on the board? Yes, Jason.
I don't know how as a board, we, I feel like I heard, I don't know that I heard anybody not say, we need to look carefully at this issue going forward on this board. And I wonder about simply taking an action on the motion as it sits and not committing to some kind of, I mean, we were at, you know, Biarke kind of put it out there, like, when are we going to talk about this stuff? I'd like to see us as a board tonight make some sort of commitment to taking this on. And taking it on in a kind of a real way, you know, not just the sixth grade question, as you say, Peter, right? But what are we going to do about pre-K? You know, we voted to have a kindergarten entry age that limits the ability of some kids to participate in kindergarten-related programming. And there is a, there is an issue. We have a problem in our district with available pre-K spots. For those kids who need that kind of programming, who are ready for that programming and don't meet our cutoff, we have a problem that we need to solve, that we are bound to solve. Those are our students. Pre-K students are our students. We have an issue of inequity across sixth grade experience. That's a problem that we need to solve as a board, and we need to do that now. Right? That's not just as part of a long-term solution. If anything was clear to me out of this report, it's that we need to take a look at this stuff. I mean, all of these questions are coming up now. You know, I mean, I, I get the concern about what are we going to do with our schools? One thing we're going to do with our schools could be pre-K, right? But we can't just make a sixth grade, in my view, we couldn't just make a sixth grade determination without looking at that issue too and how we're going to utilize all these facilities, which is what Biarke, I think, was also alluding to. You know, I, I don't know how we want to do that, but I would feel really uncomfortable leaving this conversation tonight with just a vote on the recommendation and going no further than that as a board. Because these are board questions. This, we can't just look to the superintendent to come to us with, here's what I suggest, and may you say yes or no.
So, we have a motion and a second in front of us that speaks directly to this, to just the superintendent's recommendation. We can, any board members available to amend or provide a motion thereafter. Chris.
I would call the question before us.
Okay, we have a motion to call the question, which is non-debatable. All those in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nah.
The ayes appear to have it, and the question is called. So, we will move to the vote. So, the current motion on the table is to accept the report of the superintendent, or the recommendation, excuse me, of the superintendent. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it, and we have accepted the recommendation of the superintendent.
Brian voted too.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay.
Lauren.
Brian texted, aye.
Yes.
Per Jason's comments though, I think, I didn't, I didn't want it to be part of the same motion. I thought it was not specifically germane to that. But I totally respect and would welcome that type of structure at some point that we can talk about it because that would be my main reason for not, whatever the superintendent's recommendation was, my main reason for voting no, or voting yes on the thing, but voting no against doing it right now. So, I, I think that, I, I do think we need to proceed, whether tonight is the night or that within the next two months that we come up with a thought-out process that how we're going to do this. I don't, I just don't think making a motion that we're going to do it because I think every one of us here has that in mind and that's part of what tempered our either positive or negative feelings about it. I think the report here is great, okay? And I like the, the ending was comforting to me, but it was a surprise to me like it was to others. And I, I think we just have to proceed now. We've gotten by this, okay? But we need to proceed into more solid ways to, to deal with this. This in the context of the big issues, whether there are elephants in the room or just, they're elephants. They're not even in the room, so.
There may be more than one elephant.
Yeah, there's a lot, Alan.
Couple tigers.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I'm not sure, Jason, if you had a motion in mind, but I think we can all, we can just sort of agree by consensus that this is a major agenda item for us to take up and to commit to. Yes, Ruth?
I just wanted to reiterate something that Jason said. I'm uncomfortable with the pattern that we seem to have developed this year where the superintendent and his team do some research and bring to us a big recommendation and then we have a go-around-the-table tense conversation about it and then we vote. I'm not comfortable with that as a way of our board making decisions. And so, I, I would really echo what Jason said, that we need to have a better structure for doing that, that's more the, the board involved on the front end rather than the, than just the back end.
But I would agree that especially given what we are facing, that this is really going to be a board-driven issue.
Can, I mean, I, I agree with a lot of things you said. I didn't think, I don't think right now is the time to start making motions. I, I think that for me, we had a, one board retreat. I think we need more. I think we've talked about more training and we've, we've been waiting to hear about that. There were some people that were going to get together to, to talk about that. And I, I think that's what comes up from this, is that we need to get into this stuff. And we've been forming as a board and we haven't, we haven't done that yet. And I think that's the work ahead as, as the ACSD board. I mean, I wonder about having a, a standing agenda item on our school configuration and sort of all the questions that, that raises. I mean, we could, we, we could sort of designate that to a committee, but I really feel like it's a full board discussion. So, I'd rather it sit on our agenda as a standing item that we really sit down and look at every, every meeting. Because I feel like it's pretty core to the work that we've got ahead of us in the next year. I don't know. I don't think that requires a motion, but I'm happy to make that if that's, people feel that's necessary.
That's entirely your, your call.
I just want to make a comment. I think the fact that we're all coming from different schools, all of us on here, and we're just now beginning to work as a unified board. And I think it's very difficult for us to, at least, I know it was for me because I was coming from a Middlebury perspective and I, I looked at it one way. But when you open up the discussion to all the other schools, it really opened up my own mind that there's a lot more to think about than just Middlebury. So, I want to make sure that we're cognizant of the fact that we are working as a unified group and that we're not just, you know, hunkering into our own, for me, it would be Mary Hogan School or Middlebury. So, I just want to make sure that that's part of our discussion, is that it's not, we are going to have to be thinking the way people from other districts and others, I mean, other schools are thinking because we have to be, there has to be consensus. We're unified, we're united, and we have to do it together instead of being divided. So, that's just a, something I've learned in just the few months that I've been here, how important it is to really broaden your inquiry. And I think that you did a great job doing that, Peter, and your team. I appreciate it.
I think, does anybody have any objection to Jason's idea of keeping this a standing agenda item? I think by consensus, that would both, that would work fine. And we can talk further about this at our meeting in August, which is going to be a facilitated board training and, and we can set some time apart for that.
My only issue is understanding what that means because it's a little vague. Standing.
That at every meeting?
Not what you said, what Jason was saying about a standing item.
It's vague.
Yeah. So, in August or September, it's okay if we all understand what it is we're talking about. We need all the pieces of the puzzle to, so we can debate. I wouldn't want to be surprised coming to each meeting, learning that it's a different thing each time.
We'll take that up again at our training in August. Okay, so we need some action on a retirement amendment, retirement plan amendment resolution.
Sir Quinn. So, this is basically a board resolution to rename all of our existing plans, which each district has its own plan, into ACSD 403B plan. Basically, just a unification issue.
Okay.
I'm surprised everybody doesn't want to stay for this part.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the board resolution as provided to us in our materials?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Is that we've voted on something that was similar to this earlier and then we had to rescind? Or is this totally?
That was VEMERS.
Okay.
Which is the municipal retirement plan.
Okay.
Where the VEMERS board originally, or the state originally said that your existing employees did not have to be on it, and then they decided, no, that's incorrect. They do have to stay on it, so that's a whole separate piece.
Okay.
This is the 403B plan that is offered to the non-UN staff and everyone who's not on... and everyone who's not on VEMERs has the opportunity to participate in the 403B plan.
So this is an optional plan?
Yep.
Is our, like our existing plan, we're just extending it, or is this a brand?
No, this is our existing plan, but every district has its own named plan, and so we're just bringing it up all into ACSD.
Basically a name change, document name change issue, right?
Yep.
Okay, all, any other questions? All those in favor of approving the resolution as presented, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? All right. Okay, so next on our agenda, a little bit of talk about our August board training. This is really an outcome of our board retreat that we had. And, you know, some of the issues that I noted that kept coming up and that we had all talked about needing a little more clarification on. So whatever he was, the idea would be have a facilitated discussion and some decision-making, not just talk about it, but actually, you know, codify some procedures, or decision-making, or policy, or bylaws, or whatever term you want to throw at it. Clarify board decision-making process, including the role of committees, committee members, and board members. The roles, responsibility, and limitations of board members, and how do we meet those responsibilities in the future. We talk a lot about policy and monitoring it from the point of view of the superintendent. But a lot of policy pertains to the boards, and we need to talk about how are we going to monitor our work and compliance with our own policies. As well as, I think we should talk about further board development work, i.e. further board training. And I think in wake of our conversation tonight, we'll set aside some time to talk, not necessarily about the issue at hand, but how, the best structure for us to address the issue as a board. Does that sound okay?
I've got one name, I don't know if you.
Yeah, I was actually, someone, I have one name too, and I actually just texted to get confirmation on it. Because I can't remember the name, but maybe it's the same person.
Jim Fitzpatrick?
No.
Okay, okay.
Are people comfortable with Peter and Ruth kind of coming together on this and picking a facilitator? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for doing that.
Do we have a date?
So that's the other topic on this.
These are our next board meetings.
So our next board meeting is eight, seven, which is a Monday night. Are people okay with doing this on a Monday evening, or do you feel like doing it on a Saturday in August? I said it with some, a bit of toe to that.
I won't, I can't do Monday night on the seventh. I won't be there on the seventh, that's a few days.
We may.
We also might need flexibility in terms of who we find.
Yeah. So we, this may be, this may go out on a sort of come-around-a-date process.
Doodle mouth.
A doodle, that's the word.
Are we going to still have a meeting on the seventh?
This is designed to be that meeting, so whatever date that falls on, but then we'll be back on, you know, back on for the 21st. All right. Didn't want to take a moment as the governing board of all of our schools. Just to, Peter's going to let us know who we have for retiring teachers this year, and it'd be nice to just recognize them as a board. Prepare for that.
Yeah, one sec. So we have a few retiring teachers this year, and we recognized the three of them at the UD3 graduation. The three are, one is from Moms, Peter Breakley, who many of you know. You had him. Yeah, huge, huge loss for Moms in the community, but he has, he's changed many lives, both in the classroom and, I think, in the community as well. So he's retiring. We also have two teachers from the high school retiring. One is Bob Shaw, Social Studies. And the other is Bill, who's the second?
Lisa Kirkland.
Thank you, Lisa Kirkland, who is, who is also retiring.
She's a math teacher.
Yep.
She had been Lisa O'Connor. Anyway, how about a round of applause for the years that they've been in? Okay, Policy Committee, would you like to walk us through what's in front of us?
Peter, can I just ask?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did you say something about the board committee assignments?
Oh, sorry. No, I skipped right over it. I have it right in front of me. Yeah, sorry, I meant to email this out today. For those of you who didn't get back to me, I basically kept you where you were. But we do have the new Finance Committee, which will be Nick and Ruth and Steve. And the charge to them is being developed within the Policy Committee right now, is that correct? Is there a?
It will be.
Well, we have finance, policy.
That sounds like it will help.
So who was on that?
Nick, Ruth, and Steve. Negotiations such as it is will continue with Chris and Perry. As that is sort of winding down, Perry asked to remain on Policy. Policy will be Jason, Mary, Chip, and Perry, if I didn't say them at the front of that. And Community Engagement will be hanging together, Jen, Victoria, Peter, and Suzanne.
I have a question.
Yes.
So in the Policy Committee, does that mean they need three people to have a call?
I think two.
Four people?
The four-person ones probably need, well, we could write a policy.
They need three.
We'll have to have three.
Yeah. I just know it's been an issue, so I'm curious about.
Yeah, we need to address that, we will as we go along. All right, now we're on to Policy.
Can I ask a technical question? Why are all the board things coming from Mary?
I have no idea.
They haven't been able to figure it out. We've asked central office. Mary accepts.
One just came through.
Yeah. She accepts it for some reason.
It came through three days ago.
Just came through.
I just enjoyed, I thought you were being really nice.
She needed to really keep us on task, so.
No, I did it on Board Pack three days ago. That's why I'm surprised all of a sudden.
Whoever just sent an email is pretending to be Mary. It just happened.
Someone run over to central office and see who it is.
Yeah, we just went through.
It came through on there, it's not Mary.
I just got like a meeting request, invitation, ACSD.
All right.
Well, I didn't get it.
From Mary Go.
It's three days late.
Could you put your best technical minds on that?
It's about changing a meeting on August 21st. That you didn't do three days ago.
No.
No, so this is not related to what you're doing.
I was just putting it in my calendar.
This is somebody pretending. Oh, I wonder if her Outlook calendar is.
That's what I think is happening.
You should probably go to the tech people.
I think that's what it is.
It's like you're in a rush, I'm sure.
I would have been found out a long time ago.
That was a, no more dates.
Oh, my God.
We're only seeing the ones that are related to it.
Okay, student attendance.
So if the gang who worked on these agrees, I'd like to move that we do them all at once. I think they're clean now, and I know Ruth may want to comment about the child nutrition one, but the rest of them, I think, are pretty well-drilled. As long as.
Are you moving them?
I would move that we do them all unless there's an objection.
Second, okay. So now it's time for questions and answers.
Maybe I should ask Ruth, it sounds like, I just have a question.
Well, let's take them one at a time, student attendance.
Oh, okay.
Unless it was a general global question.
No, it was about apple cider.
Okay. All right, well, let's do, we'll go in order.
That again? I was just curious.
Oh, we could bring up Monument Farms Chocolate Milk.
I didn't, I wasn't going to touch that one.
Use their packaging, that's all.
My only question about this, and I was actually cropped up on a couple others. Should we have a, like, reporting that we are in compliance with the policy on there? Do we need that for a policy like this? I think compliance would just be saying, yes, we have a truant officer.
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Are you on the school attendance one?
Well, most, most policy, you have to have somebody report that we're in compliance with the policy and.
Wouldn't that be a procedure that Peter reports about?
I mean, this goes back to policy governance, I believe.
Yeah.
Whether there's, I mean, the structure of the policy.
Okay.
You're wondering about whether there's a staff member who reports to the board on whether, whether the district is in compliance with the board policy.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Any breach, Peter should advise us.
It's generally subsumed into the responsibilities of the superintendent.
I'm totally comfortable with that, I just wanted to ask a question.
It's, I mean, it's required by law, too. That's why we added the phrase as required by law, because it was a little awkward to have that in there.
All right, cider.
The school nutrition? Go ahead.
I literally, I saw the notes that you sent around, and I just, it surprised me, so I just, I think I've gotten the, I was just curious.
Oh, the note, it's not on the policy, I was like, oh, did we talk about?
Was it cider or cider vinegar?
So I sent you all some notes that we got from the food director from the Abbey Group last week. Victoria and I were in a meeting where they were talking to us about the taste test program that happens at Mary Hogan, and it's run by the Abbey Group, which is our food service provider in collaboration with Middlebury College students, and their Office of Community Engagement, and then the local health department. And it's to try to get more students to taste things like kale and radishes and foods that are in season that elementary kids may not want to eat. So at that meeting, we talked about the fact that the Policy Committee had actually just, you know, worked on the nutrition policy. And I said, you know, we had, one of the things the Policy Committee talked about when we did this policy is that there's a requirement that there be community input and educator input and professional input into the procedures that are drawn from this policy. And so I said, oh, you know, it would make sense that you would be part of that process. So I sent her the policy, and she sent me back those comments. And frankly, I don't remember specifically what she said about cider, but I'll.
I, it just, I just skimmed through it, and it surprised me, not so much the chocolate milk.
They had to take Monument Farms and the cider.
It said Champlin Urgers Apple Cider had to be taken, the word eliminated.
Size, the amount of sugar. They don't fall under the federal guidelines.
Serving size was too big for the product.
Got it.
You mean the size of the product? The container?
Don't you think the federal government should be doing that, telling us what size of cider or kids could use? It's the serving size, so they're trying to find smaller.
The requirements.
It's the Bloomberg's.
Half pint instead of pints, I guess, is what I think they're trying to do, yeah.
Any other questions about the nutrition and physical?
I did want to just make one comment on it, because this is one that I kind of agonized over a little bit. The previous policies that all of our districts had included stuff about wellness. And Mary came to the meeting where the Policy Committee talked about this because of her experience as a school nurse. And it included, it excluded anything about mental health and social emotional health. And I've always been concerned that that's not part of our wellness policy, that we would consider sort of whole-child wellness as nutritional, physical, mental, and social emotional. So we removed the word wellness at Mary's suggestion because it's, it's a little too broad and vague. And we just made it a policy about nutrition and physical activity, which is, which is what is specifically required of us under federal law. So it's a much narrower policy, and I think one of the reasons, and I don't want to speak for you, but that you wanted to be on the Policy Committee is to develop a much broader policy about health and wellness and.
Social emotional.
And social emotional. So this is a much narrower policy, and it sort of sticks to the federal requirements, which is driving the cider and chocolate milk question.
But we also said that we would look at that as a policy with Mary's issue.
Yeah, absolutely.
Questions on, sorry?
I have a question. I might have missed it, you know, the nuance. My question relates to student financial accounts for lunch in maybe breakfast programs, and how delinquent accounts might be treated in our school system, and is that?
No, that's a good question. It has actually come up in other states, and maybe you've heard about this. And it's been kind of ugly in other states. It does not address in the policy. We certainly could add something, but my experience as a parent with delinquent accounts is that they reach out to parents, they don't say anything to the students.
At the elementary school level or in all of the levels?
At Mary Hogan, that's the way they do it. And, and actually, at all three, I have kids in all three of the schools that have the Abbey Group, and that's how they do it. They just email me saying, you know, I will admit, your account's a dollar, in the negative by a dollar, and then. So now I always pay mine. I don't know what they do if you don't pay it.
Right, and we don't all have the Abbey Group either.
Right, so I'm not sure what all the other school districts do.
I've heard some different things at the middle school, just from people that I know, that situations that have happened to their children and their students. So I just wonder if we need a more consistent policy that really spells out.
You can add it into. Can we ask our administrators? Do you know, Chris, what happens specifically at Moms?
We get moms that did not have a specific policy up until, or a specific procedure up until last month, and then we follow the vote from the base school, Mary Hogan, and give them a chocolate milk.
Okay, so it goes to, so that's been my experience.
We could ask and finalize the procedures.
I think we'd follow under a procedure more so than.
Yeah, I think it's procedure.
By the state? And it's a procedure, not a policy issue?
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, Tom?
And Abbey Group at Mary Hogan, and elsewhere, other elementary schools, even if the student is delinquent, they would still receive the same much chocolate milk as we report to the championship. They would not be denied at all.
You're saying they would not be denied a meal at the elementary level, but they would be at a higher level?
I can't, I can't speak to what their practices.
But I think to answer your broader question.
Yeah, that it's addressed in a different way.
They're working on a procedure.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And will you share that procedure with us once? Good question.
School residence policy. I just had a quick question. Is this markedly different at all from what the previous ACSU policy was?
This is a brand-new policy. Okay, this policy was developed as a, you know, we anticipate that Peter may get some questions from parents now that we're one district. You know, can my kid go to a different elementary school? And so while not answering the full question of intra-district open enrollment, this is sort of tipping our toes into it, saying that there may be specific instances where it makes sense for a student to be transferred to another school. And we have very specific instances that are not just, hey, I want my kid to go to a different school, but that something has happened, or that there's some, you know, family, medical, financial issue that would, and that the superintendent would make that decision in conjunction with the educators and principals, and that that decision would be final. There wouldn't be a way to appeal it to the board. So this, so this is a brand-new policy, given our new board structure.
How would this policy have affected the UD3 decision we made a few months ago for a student who had left the district and was asking if they could, I think that's what it was, could remain, family had moved, but could he remain tuition-free? They had moved to Virginia, I think.
This is for, this is for within the district, so that stipulates January 15th within the district, so it's a student's going from town to town at the elementary level, but.
What we were doing was waiving tuition.
Right, that's a separate, that's not covered by this policy.
Yeah, so this would be just amongst our seven elementary schools, basically.
Okay, questions on proficiency-based graduation requirements? Community use of school facility?
Is there anything around?
Is there anything around fees for use or is that procedural?
Procedural, yeah.
Yeah, because fees change, we decided it was much more of a procedural thing so that we, they didn't become, we wouldn't have to redo it every year. And we had a lot of discussion about this one, but kept it as broad as possible so that we could be flexible, but really wanted to say that whatever, who, that we wouldn't allow use that doesn't conform with our policies, procedures and our sort of appropriate use of our facilities. And that doesn't interfere with our vision and mission to, to sort of.
And does it, I don't think, I remember that it doesn't say who makes the decision, is it in the principal, the principal of each building that has the power to say who? I can't remember.
Um, it, you're right, it doesn't actually say, but it would be the superintendent and he would delegate to, however, probably to the principal.
To the principal, yeah.
Well, it's supposed to outline the procedure. That would be outlining the procedure.
It would be in procedure, yeah.
What are you wondering about?
Well, I'm just wondering why the superintendent shouldn't be the one just, you know, hearing about whether the Girl Scouts can meet at the Cornwall School.
That's, yeah, that's principal, principal decision, yep.
And procedures are always something that the board can ask to review and, and see and if we don't like the way the procedures are, we don't feel like they conform with our policy intent, we can ask the superintendent to change them. So we may want to, as part of our policy review, have procedure review so that we're all comfortable with the procedures that come out of our policies to make sure they, it's like with the rulemaking process.
Peter, I just have a question, sometimes there could be some controversy about some groups that want to meet in a school.
Yeah.
And so is it, will the procedure be able to clearly state that whatever their message is, is not part of our mission and vision? I mean, I'm, I'm a little bit worried about that because.
It's in two places, so it's in the policy on the last part of the second paragraph here, no use that conflicts with the ACSD vision or mission shall be approved, which is what the policy team put on at the policy level and the procedure also outlines.
Okay, so you would probably have the final say?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, it's, we talked about this a lot. It's ver, we all appreciate that kind of concern, except you can't really write a policy that allows public use of the building in a normal way and not leave yourself open for times when superintendent may make a controversial decision.
Mm-hmm.
Where or another. So I, I don't, I think that's just part of the, the game, I don't see how you can do it otherwise.
And we, we settled on conformance with the mission and the vision and the, sort of the general standards of the district, because that's really where we lay out what our, you know, what our expectations are for our school community and ourselves and, and sort of what the standards should be. And that's a, that's a statement and a, a vision that's been vetted through the community. So it seemed to be the best place to look for what should guide use of those. Yeah, I thought the addition of the mission and vision was a very good idea.
It's also, I think, a supportive umbrella for interpretation so that it's not pigeonholing into, well, we found these eight areas that are important, but there may be nine or 10.
Yeah.
And this, this, the, the broad nature of this, I think, is important.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the slate of policy. Further discussion, further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Just keep building our foundation of policies.
I have one question. Nick, do we, not Nick, Perry, do we have any other absolute policies that are outstanding or have we? These complete all of the required policies and added a couple that Peter wanted by one July. But we, we're, for July 1st, we are on board with at least what we have to have. Yes. That's what I, I just wanted to make sure.
We are going to need finance policies.
Well, I'm not, not.
There's other stuff.
Yeah, there's other stuff happening.
Oh, there's a lot of stuff happening, but I meant, that's for the board who isn't sitting on this to understand that.
Initially, yeah.
Yeah.
And speaking of finance policy, Finance Committee, that's probably the committee that kind of has to get rolling because we take over July 1st and then we'll immediately have to deal with director's orders and whatnot. And the questions come up a number of times over director's orders and how do we deal with such a large number of them, but I think that I would leave that up to the Finance Committee to come up with a, a system so they're not carrying the whole burden. Maybe we, we pass a resolution that any two board members can approve director's orders, but we'll leave it to the committee to come up with a program that seems to work.
Can we also request that Josh staffs our committees and we have them there? Can you request that? I don't know.
As long as he doesn't ask or raise. As a result of the extra.
Not to, oh, to do director's orders, but to be at committee meetings.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And Peter, if he wishes to be.
Well, yeah, of course, but I mean, just so that it's a staff.
Well, the two of us.
Yeah.
All right, anything else to come up before we go into executive session?
We thank our administrators for all the work on the sixth grade.
Definitely in order. To all of you, thank you for all the work on the sixth grade study. You know, it, it was like reading a, a great novel, the final inquiry report with an ending that you didn't know which way it was going to go, but what I was struck with was the deliberation, frankly, the science that went into all of this and for your time and energy, we are all very appreciative, thank you. How about a motion to go into an executive session to discuss negotiations?
Similar.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, we'll take a five-minute break while we.